Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 11th, 2018, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody. I'm Rob Parish. I'm sitting in tonight for our Chair Wendy McClure, who's joining us by phone. So, first item of business is approval of the minutes from the June 27th meeting. Do we have any additions, corrections, comments? If not, will somebody-
I move their approval.
Joel?
Second.
Mike, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Moving on to the second item. Correspondents, Mike, any correspondence from-
The only correspondence I have is I sent out an email, I think, earlier today or yesterday about we have a North Idaho Planners Conference at next Friday, the 1912 Center, with a reception at Coulter's Creek afterwards. And I just wanted to extend the invitation to everybody. If, you know, you wanted to attend, we'd get you registered and everything. But it should be a rather, you know, 20, 25 people, but it should be a good day of sessions, so.
Terrific.
Are they folks from all over the state, or mostly in the north?
It's mainly the north. So, Regions 1 and 2 of Idaho APA are mainly to the north, you know, the northern portion of the state. We do have our education and outreach person from Boise coming up to do the ethics session. So Diane Kouchlon will be up from Boise, so.
Do you want us to send an email if we're interested in attending?
Yeah, just let me know, and I'll get you registered and everything. And then hopefully you're attending because you're given the tour.
I am.
At least a portion of the day.
Great, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Oh, is there a question?
I'm sorry.
Time of day?
Starts at 9:30 and concludes at 4:30 for the reception. Reception lasts from 4:30 to 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Wendy and I have one other item that we'd like to defer till the end of the meeting under the correspondence, so we'll wait on that one. So, third item, Transportation Commission meeting. Joel?
I think I already reported on the previous meeting. The next meeting of the Transportation Commission is scheduled in this room from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow. Three items would be of interest to this group. One is that we get a status update on what's going on with Third Street. Another is that we get a presentation relative to the proposed changes in parking regulations down around Gritman. And from the agenda, I've seen we're apparently supposed to be providing some recommendations to council on what should be done there. And the third one is a presentation on bike ride-share programs. The city and the university are talking about possibly sponsoring some bike ride-share opportunities. And the, well, ride-share, in many cases, has expanded to include electric-powered scooters, which raises a number of interesting issues since apparently state statutes do not define them at all. The, a number of the western states have made some progress in defining them and defining where they can be used and how, but Idaho hasn't. So, we'll be talking about it and seeing what the prospects are.
That's going to be an interesting conversation. I'm looking forward to your next report. Some of the bike-sharing programs have gotten a little controversial in some of the larger metropolitan areas, so it's going to be interesting.
That's going to be a part of the discussion. I should probably mention in passing that I am going to be in, on, be traveling, spending a week on the west coast, western coast of Oregon, and then spending some time in Alaska. And the timing of those two trips comes so that I'm going to be missing all of the P&amp;Z and transportation meetings until the second week of September.
We'll maybe see if we can invite somebody else to come and give us an update. So, that's great. Or we'll just wait till you get back.
Okay.
Super. Okay, thanks, Joel. Next item is public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission. If there's any items of interest not on the agenda tonight, or it's pending before us or city council, anybody care to address the commission? If not, for those watching on TV, don't forget to come down and talk with us sometime. So, okay, not seeing any interested takers. We'll move on to the public hearing, proposal for rezone of Lot 1, Block 1, of the Peterson Second Edition to the City of Moscow. And Mike will make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So, before you tonight, we've got a public hearing for a proposed rezone. The address is 406 Baker Street, happens to be Lot 1, Block 1, or Peterson Second Edition. So, the proposal, we have a 32,569 square foot parcel. This was platted in 2010, and it was part of the Peterson Second subdivision. It's located at 406 Baker Street, and the applicant's requesting to rezone the property from currently neighborhood business to residential office. So, a little bit of back history about Peterson Second subdivision, platted in 2010, consisted of 110 lots, 64 of which were within the R2, which is our moderate-density residential zone, 30 of which are in the R3 zone, 15 were in the R4 zone, and we had one in neighborhood business, three-acre city park site at the beginning of the subdivision to the west, and a stormwater detention pond that were part of this subdivision. It's currently undeveloped, so they haven't started infrastructure since it was approved in 2010. So, you could see it, this is the property in question at the center of your screen, outlined in red. I've got Baker Street here, running in a northeasterly direction. You can see the property lines that were part of Peterson Second subdivision, outlined in orange here. So, you can see the future street projections, cul-de-sacs and whatnot that were platted as part of that subdivision. To the south, we have primarily multifamily apartment developments along Baker Street. There are some professional office developments along A Street, further here to the south. Institutional uses, there's a church here, as well as a community garden and another professional office here on C Street. Looking at the comprehensive plan, land use designation, currently designated as urban residential, along with the most of the Baker Street corridor. As you transition up into Peterson Second subdivision, the north and the east portions are currently designated as auto-urban residential. And then portions of properties that are adjacent to Peterson and C Street are currently designated as neighborhood conservation. So, what the comp plan says about the urban residential designation, it's intended to allow higher intensity development, and then it ranges from single-family neighborhoods to attach in multiple-family residential uses. And then it states common densities of four to 15 units per acre. And then it points to appropriate areas for the designation, close proximity to the city core, areas of commercial development, and areas adjacent are in close proximity to designated arterials. Can also be utilized to create and reinforce urban, single-family neighborhoods with alleys, rear garage access, similar to near downtown neighborhoods. And then it points us to generally appropriate zoned, multiple-family residential or medium-density residential, so that's the R3 and R4 zones. So, looking at the proposal, it's currently neighborhood business. Proposes to rezone it to the residential office. And the zoning code, residential office, moderately intensive zone, supposed to include both offices and high-density housing. And then it points us to appropriate areas on the perimeter of commercial or industrial districts where they abut residential uses, where transportation network use is greater than desirable for lower-density residential uses, where landforms create sites which are reasonably accessible by transportation systems, which are buffered from nearby residential uses. And then development patterns in a neighborhood will allow development of moderate intensity to occur without producing adverse visual impacts or harm to the transportation network. Then examples of uses allowed in the RO zone, essentially the R4 zone, except for there's no limitation on the professional office. R4 restricts professional office to only 2,000 square feet in size and floor area, and that doesn't happen with the RO zone. So, you have a wide variety of residential uses, running from single-family, two-family, twin homes, townhouses, and multifamily dwellings. And then they have professional offices, bed and breakfast, daycare facilities, and parking lots are allowed in the RO zone. It'll include future extension of water and sewer mains to this property, and they're of adequate size to handle any future development that would occur with the RO zone, which is going to be less intensive than a typical development that would occur in the current zone, which is neighborhood business. Also includes the future extension of Baker Street. Baker is a collector for the future designation, as well as the current extension of Baker. It's a 38-foot-wide roadway, there's curb gutter, eight-foot tree lawns and five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. And just to remind you, the rezone criteria before you is the first one, is consistency with the comprehensive plan. The second one is providing for logical and orderly location of land uses and community services and facilities. The use is expected to occur as a result of a reason will be compatible with the surrounding area. And then the size-type density development expected to occur aren't going to create an undue burden on the delivery of services. And then the size-type and density of development expected to occur can be adequately served by the existing transportation network, public facilities, and services. So, and the applicant did conduct a public neighborhood meeting with the affected property owners within 600 feet, and that happened on May 23rd of this year. And those materials are attached to your packet. And with that, staff recommends that the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed rezone to city council, and then direct staff to prepare the RCS document. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Okay, I guess you're off the hook, so we will open the public hearing. And I guess first, if you'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. Susan Wilson, 208 South Main Street, Suite Number 2. Thank you for your time this evening. Mike, as usual, has done a great job in submitting the, presenting the application. It's pretty straightforward. The neighborhood business just allows a little bit more limitation on use. Mr. Peterson wants to be able to have a little bit more flexibility. So, when and if the market and finances and all the other issues that come together in regards to trying to do a development like this come together, then we feel like having that particular parcel as an RO is going to give him a little bit more advantage. Right now, it's a little difficult moving forward with the, with the development, you know, a lot because the parkland is there on the, on the west side, and that is going to take up a lot of marketable property. So, that it's important that at least those parcels in the beginning of the development have the most ability to be as marketable as possible when the time comes. So, and obviously, as Mike pointed out, it's right adjacent to R4. It seems to be really consistent. We could have just asked for a zone to R4, but, you know, it'd be nice to have a little bit of that professional office flexibility to try to keep that as part of the development. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Susan? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
And is there anybody else that would like to address either in favor or anti or neutral? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open it to discussion with the Commissioners. Any comments, questions? No?
I just have one question that I didn't ask Mike. Will Baker Street be developed in front of the, adjacent to the property?
Correct.
Yeah.
It'll extend up in the same alignment there to the northeast, and will be the primary frontage of this property.
Right, right. Okay. I just presumed, but because of the color just goes out to the middle of the street, I just thought maybe I'd better ask.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I have a question. It's a clarification, tiny one. So, in the application on D, on the, that the subdivision won't cause any undue burden on delivery of services, it says that it will not, and then at the end of the sentence, it says, "Once the subdivision is fully developed." What does that mean? Does that mean before the subdivision is fully developed? Is it that piece? Are you talking about the other pieces? I just want some clarification here. I'm finding myself reading it several ways.
And you're looking at the application that was submitted?
The application that was submitted, under D.
And the applicant's response to that question?
Correct, yes. And the very last thing says, "Once the subdivision is fully developed." And I'm finding myself reading it several ways, so I'm just curious.
Well, it's intended that subdivision's fully developed, so all the city services will be extended, and city streets will be extended to that property. And so, that would say, it's just meaning that city services will be extended to the area and be able to serve this property, as well as the rest of the development.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to check.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So, how would you like to proceed? Don't everybody speak at once.
Make a motion, will you, send the proposal to the city council for approval?
Okay, great. So, Dennis?
I'll second. Just one second.
Okay, great. So, we have a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, super. It's considered done. Now, we need to move to a relevant statement of relevant criteria and standards, so we need a separate motion for that, do we not?
Correct.
Okay. So, anybody want to move to direct staff to prepare? Okay, Kurt?
Make a motion, we direct staff to prepare the statement of relevant criteria and, thank you.
Second.
Okay, Mike, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, okay. We're all done. You're great. Thank you for, thank you for coming. So, we're moving to two other approvals of recent statements and of relevant criteria and standards for items that were on the agenda, I believe, at the last meeting. So, if you've had an opportunity to read that, the first one is for the property on 109 North Almond, that we approved to go from R4 to neighborhood business, I believe. So, I would entertain a motion to direct staff to, let's see, we've already approved it, haven't you? We just need to review and-
Approve the document.
Approve it. So, any questions, comments on it?
I didn't see any problems with it. I will make a motion that we approve the statement.
Great, okay. Motion by Joel, second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So, we'll move on to the second one, which is the property that was 23, 24 South Highway 95, and the area of city impact. So, again, we just need to do the same thing to, are there any questions or comments about the statements? No? Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Okay, Joel again?
Second.
And Nell, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, opposed? All right, great. So, we're done with those. And let's see, Mike, I believe you're up again to talk about the proposed legacy crossing district plan amendment.
So, this item is regarding a review of the legacy crossing district plan amendment, which was created in 2008 and amending the plan this year. So, a little bit of background, within the city's adopted 2015 strategic plan, the council has identified deteriorating public infrastructure within the downtown as a major challenge area. They had a joint meeting with city council and the URA. The expansion of legacy crossing district boundary to include Main Street was identified as a, one of the top priorities. Amending the boundary would allow the agency to partner with the city in future downtown streetscape and public infrastructure improvements. Would also look better with grant applications in order to be able to do those improvements within the downtown area. The urban renewal district creation or amendment process includes a number of sequential steps as outlined in Idaho Code. So, you have to go through this specific process, the first of which is the Urban Renewal Agency completes an eligibility study of the area, and then transmits that to city council for consideration, and that happened on March 1st of this year. Council considers the eligibility study, and if they concur, they approve the study and authorize the creation of the district plan. And that happened April 2nd of this year. The agency prepares the district plan and approves the transmittal to city council by resolution for the council's consideration, and that happened on June 7th. And then the plan's reviewed by the city's Planning and Zoning Commission for conformance with the comprehensive plan, and so that's what the state statutes say before the plan could advance. It has to be reviewed by the commission, and that's what we're doing tonight. And then eventually, city council approves the plan by ordinance, which formally creates the districts in any associated tax revenue allocated area. And it's anticipated that the Urban Renewal Agency will proceed in August, assuming that the commission, you know, verifies compliance with the comprehensive plan tonight. So, the plan document before you, so really, the majority of what's changed in it is just the district boundary. So, annexing the properties on the west side of Main Street, and then including the infrastructure on the east side of Main Street. So, it'd be the street and the curb gutter sidewalks on both sides of the street, but would include just the properties on the west side. So, usually, urban renewal agencies are able to fund public infrastructure projects, and so really didn't need to pick up the buildings on the east side because the infrastructure with the sidewalks would already be included. And so, that's why the buildings weren't included with the amendment and the annexation on the east side. A lot of the other items that were updated within this document were like the needs analysis, kind of the fiscal impact study. A lot of the data that's been, you know, has changed over the years has been updated within this document, and really, that's, that's the only changes that have happened. So, first, the plan document, it outlines the purpose, goals, objectives of the urban renewal project, documents compliance with all required actions, identifies activities, improvements, partnerships, and public and private participation that the agency intends to undertake. It has a financial feasibility study that's part of this for the proposed activities, and then discusses requirements related to relocation of persons and business concerns, and identifies properties that may be acquired by the agency. And so, those largely have not changed, they've just been updated. So, this is the proposed boundary amendment. You can see the, the red cross-hatched area is the area that's proposed to be annexed into the urban renewal district for legacy crossing. You can see it includes those properties on the west side of Main. This is Moscow Hotel, so that was previously not included, the western annex there, and so it'll pick up that. Ends up, we have that city triangle parking lot that the city owns here on the north couplet. That would propose to be included. And then you have the infrastructure on that east side of Main, and it actually extends up a little bit on these side streets, and then where Friendship Square is, by the PD station, and it ends up extending up to the alley there as well. And so, this is just to give you an idea of the current district boundary, and then the new proposed annexation to legacy crossing. And so, the current district boundary is outlined in purple, and we're proposing a minor annexation of the properties in this area here.
So, Mike, just kind of dumb it down for me, if you would, because I'm, I'm, it's hard for me to follow. What exactly is in the area for? That's the urban, that's the legacy?
It's the urban renewal district. And so, yeah, it's more of a TIF district, so it freezes tax revenue. So, it, you have a baseline revenue. And then all the tax that's generated from the properties where the, where the tax increment increases, those go into the Urban Renewal Agency fund in order to be able to fund public improvement projects in the district. And so, the idea is that the more, some of that tax revenue the Urban Renewal Agency uses to fund those infrastructure projects, the areas redevelop faster and have more incentive for people to buy properties if they have new infrastructure that's installed or constructed in the area. And so, that's really the idea of an urban renewal district, is to more, you know, kind of gentrify the area and-
So, our urban renewal district, that's something that the city has set up, and is like running and collecting the extra money and putting it in there and ready to fix it?
It's the Urban Renewal Agency. So, it's not the actual city itself, it's the Urban Renewal Agency. And so, that's kind of the funding mechanism we have in the state of Idaho, is urban renewal agencies. And they have to establish urban renewal districts and work with the taxing agencies in order to be able to, you know, fund those districts and provide-
Mike, I have, Wendy, I have a question. I don't have the benefit of seeing your color map, and I'm trying to figure out if I'm on the black and white. But why isn't it just the whole right-of-way and buildings on both sides of Main Street? I mean, why, how does it impact, say, the west side building owners versus the east side building owners? That's not clear to me. It seems a little arbitrary.
Well, so, the life of the district is 24 years, and there, you're allowed a one, so state law allows a one-time expansion of the district, and it can't be increased more than 10%. So, right now with-
With the 10%, that's the cap?
The 10% cap. And so, this area we have right now is around 8%, 9%. And so, you know, we looked, we looked at maybe including areas like St. John Hardware and some other areas on the east side of Main Street, but we're up against the 10% cap on the district expansion. And so, that's why the majority of the properties on the east side couldn't be included. And really, it, you know, the intent of the URAs and the districts are to fund public improvements, they're not to fund private development, and they can't fund private development. And so, there'd really be no, unless we were, you know, looking at purchasing some of those buildings and creating a parking lot or a parking lot structure out of those, there'd really, you know, there'd be really no advantage to, you know, having those within the URA because you couldn't do anything with the URA funds. There was a point in time when you could use the URA funds in order to be able to pay for some demolition on properties, but I think that some recent court cases have ruled that that is kind of a gray area, and I think the URA's attorney is advising that they wouldn't be able to use funds in order to pay for private demolition projects. And so, they really wouldn't be able to fund anything other than public improvements, so.
So, Mike, do you, do you, just to add Wendy's question, do you perceive some infrastructure possibilities on Main Street?
That's really the whole, this is where that comes from.
Yeah.
And so, that's the whole goal of the expansion, is to fund a lot of the deteriorating, you know, partner with the city.
As we've looked at third, well, it's third with the enhanced water lines and sewer lines, I presume that was the case.
Well, you have a lot of this exposed aggregate and those bulb-outs that were installed as part of the beautification projects in the 80s-
Yeah.
-that have just been deteriorating, you know, over time. And, you know, looking at the, kind of the council goal and the strategic plan to partner with the URA to try to fund, you know, some of these improvements for infrastructure downtown, that's really the main goal with the expansion.
So, Mike, is the way I, I'm still trying to completely understand it, I think I understand it. So, the buildings on the west side, even though they're not really eligible for anything because they're private properties, any kind of improvement, but their tax revenue will go into the URA to help fund these infrastructure projects?
Yeah, any increase in their tax revenue, and, I mean, the, all the properties are- Yeah, any increase in their tax revenue, and I mean, all the properties are essentially fully developed on the west side, and so...
Right.
You wouldn't see any vacant property that comes in with a large project that would generate a lot of revenue for the district. Those properties are already developed, and so they would still get the incremental revenue for, if taxes get increased, but it's not going to be substantial. It's more or less, you know, trying to fund some of the infrastructure in the area, not necessarily, you know, including vacant property or property that's soon to be, you know, reused or rebuilt or reconstructed in order to, you know, boost the revenue of the district.
Yeah, one of the, one of the best examples, a URA project that is already closed out was All Tourists, and the tax increment actually included East Side Marketplace, but all of the infrastructure was developed by URA under that tax increment, and I believe that's now been closed out.
It's been closed, yeah.
So it was, this is the sort of thing where the tax increment is going to help fund the infrastructure improvements.
And it'd be the infrastructure in this whole area. So this is all the properties, so, you know, as redevelopment occurs, even, you know, for the Identity on Main project, you know, a lot of that revenue goes into the Legacy Crossing District. And so any project, you know, anywhere else in the district as far as public infrastructure would be able to be, you know, partially funded by some of the...
So the new project that we saw last week, or last time on A Street, that's within the district, isn't it? I think, right there at Dumas.
So a lot of that was, you know, partnering with, the agency would be able to partner with the developer in order to improve the, you know, currently, that property doesn't have any sidewalks or curbing and deteriorating street all the way around it, and that's something that the URA would be able to fund.
Mike, I don't know what the best moment in time is, but after Dennis' caution, we've got one, two, three, we've got at least three or four people on the commission who weren't here back a few years ago when we did, when this happened, and it would be, it might be valuable to find, if we could find that right hour to go through and just review the urban renewal. I don't know if you would do it, or whether we'd bring Bill or somebody from the URA just to talk about it, because Dennis' question, I think, would, is a question that several people on the commission have right now, that haven't watched it grow. Why did the urban, why is the district the size it is? What was the dream for it? So I don't know, consider that as a possibility. I don't know, Wendy, if you think that's an idea, we might just find a time to do a little background on it.
Well, I, I think that's a great idea because reading through the, reading through the paperwork for the package, it's pretty, you know, recorded legally, and it would be nice to just have a maybe more succinct and aspirational description of what, what the intent is and what the mechanisms are. I don't completely understand the financial mechanisms. I have a better understanding from Mike's explanation a few minutes ago, but I don't know, I think it would be a great idea. It depends on the rest of you, I guess.
Yeah, I would support that. I think it is a good idea, and it can get a little convoluted in the explanation, but it's really a worthwhile thing to learn about. I went through it because I was involved with All Tourists, so, and that was really a successful project. And in fact, the success of that project led to the Legacy Crossing and the other parts of the renewal district. So, yeah, I certainly would support having some time to do a little bit of discussion with that.
And I don't have as much detail...
We can use that as one of our continuing instructions.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that's, Victoria?
Yeah, so I wanted to say that the URA meetings, I attend all the URA meetings. I find them quite fascinating and informative. So I've seen this in detail in that meeting, and all the work they've done, I think, is great. And in addition, this is infrastructure, but the other big thing they do are the Brownfield cleanup, so like the Sangria, what was going to be the Sangria property, the Sixth and Jackson. If, if a developer had to come in and do all that environmental cleanup, it just never would have happened. It was immense. And so that was something that the URA was able to take on and recover that property so that a developer can now come in and actually do the business of whatever business is going to go in there. And, you know, working on the Dumas site is the same thing. So, and this is infrastructure. We don't have brownfield cleanup here, but it's lighting, it's the sidewalks, it's the curbs, it's the, it's everything that's going to be on the street, and creating an inviting street so that, you know, we're attractive and we...
Yeah, no, I would agree. I think it'd be an interesting thing to put on, on the agenda for the future, so we'll work on that.
They're paying like extra taxes, right?
No, I know, I understand, I went up to the office. When I started, the original urban renewal Legacy Crossing District had anecdotes that, you know, were potential, were some of them were demolished, but the language continues in the amended section, and some of our Main Street is a national historic district, and that doesn't sit well with the social, and so, you know, some clarification would be, intent of it applies in history would be helpful too, in that.
And I have a little bit of background on the district that I'll go through here. It's not in, you know, probably the detail that you need to get the full picture, but it's, I do provide some background here.
Okay, good.
But yeah, Dennis, to answer your question, you don't, there's no additional taxes that you incur as property here. It's just that you have a base, as soon as the district is established, they take that, whatever the taxes are at the time, and they freeze them. And any tax increment that's earned after that goes into the URA district. And so as develop, you know, the idea is that as reinvestment occurs in the area, everybody's property values are going to increase. And so, you know, when your property value increases, your taxes increase by a certain percentage. And that increase in tax revenue goes into funding more improvements in the district to eventually, hopefully, you know...
Just because it's a high priority, so they, that's where they want the money, that money to go to.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
So a little bit of background on the Legacy Crossing District. It was established in 2008, mainly with the desire to eliminate conditions impeding the city's economic growth in an area located between Moscow's historic downtown and the University of Idaho campus. Intended to allow the agency to proactively address issues creating static economic conditions by taking actions targeted towards improvement of both underdeveloped properties and those properties in transition. And the focus of the district was to spur more rapid land use transition of properties from the former agricultural industrial uses to new uses, and thereby transform the area from its current economic liability toward economic vibrancy. And it's really, you know, the area between downtown and the university is where this was targeted, where the railroad corridor ended up going through, which is no more. So the district objectives really intended to address problems of physical deterioration and economic underdevelopment. And so that was really the main goals of the Legacy Crossing District Plan. And the proposal for public improvements and facilities to provide an improved environment for new commercial and mixed-use developments, eliminate unsafe and hazardous conditions, assist potential owners and other developers to create appropriate development sites through aggregation of existing small parcels, and where necessary, through acquisition, demolition, and disposition activities. And so that, you know, kind of example of the Sixth and Jackson, as Victoria mentioned, it was a, there needed to be some environmental cleanup there. And there's other properties that we received Brownfield's grants for in order to clean those up as well. And so there are a number of properties in the district that the city partnered with the Urban Renewal Agency in order to be able to fund those through a grant program with the state. And so there are a number of properties, Dumas was one of them, that ended up, you know, environmental sampling and some minor cleanup.
Otteness Park.
Sharp Oil, that's right now, you know, that identity's being built on right now is another site that was, you know, monitoring and environmental cleanup on that site that happened as part of that Brownfield Grant Program. And the Sixth and Jackson site was another site that happened as part of that, too. And so that's part of what the Urban Renewal Agency does. Also improve multimodal transit and multimodal parking opportunities through the district. Otherwise prevent the extension of blight and deterioration and reverse the deteriorating characteristics of the area, and promote sustainable development, and intended to minimize environmental impacts and promote wise use of natural resources, including water resources. And I think that this one objective was, I think, last time when the district was first established and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed for consistencies with the comp plan, I've attached that relevant criteria and standards document just to give you an idea of, you know, what was done in 2008. And the commission at the time had three conditions pertaining to insertion of some, you know, items as far as water and natural resources and sustainable environment practices. And so those were included before in the plan as part of a recommendation that came from planning and zoning, so. So looking at, you know, looking at the plan and then comparing it to what the Comprehensive Plan says, you know, I think our, one of our greatest areas are historic districts, and we have the downtown historic district, and this is just a great resource the city has. And so the comp plan points to, you know, keeping historic resources eligible for listing and protecting and preserving them is important to the character and heritage of the community. And I think that's more likely to happen if you have reinvestment by the city and the district in that area to keep up with the sidewalks and do new streetscape improvements, you know, just contributes to the historic district downtown and more likely to continue with the preservation of those buildings in the corridor. Section two, so this is all mainly within chapter two of the comp plan. We talk about downtown and what a treasure it is to the community, heart of the city, terms of identity, community character, community spirit, key activity center and gateway to the University of Idaho. And then it states that, you know, consequently, the quality and character of downtown, including its interfaces with the university, is a meaningful contributor to the university's ability to attract and retain students. Further on in the chapter, we talk about downtown expansion and, you know, including, has been considered through several planning efforts. 2003 Downtown Revitalization Plan, 1999 Comp Plan, looking at the, those agricultural industrial areas located between downtown and the U of I. And the Urban Renewal Agency and private interests are seeking to redevelop the area with mixed-use buildings, a reinforced connection between university, hospital, and downtown. Looking at the first phase is Legacy Crossing, and it goes on to say that since the success of the city is largely tied to the success of the university, enhancing the character of the interconnections between the two, as well as the access of university students to downtown, is an important policy priority. Now, the section on, talks about downtown parking and convenience, you know, with Jackson Street Lot being the largest public parking lot, and the access to those shops on Main Street, with, you know, business owners believing that convenience is key and having a concern with that access. And then it goes on to state that pedestrian wayfinding programs with signage and kiosks directing people to and from parking areas and other locations of interest could help alleviate the problem. And, you know, these are all things that the URA would be able to fund in that area, and we do have those kiosks, signage that's been installed over the last couple of years that Public Works did with the historic district signs, and directing people to points of interest and historic buildings and public bathrooms and parking areas and things of that nature. So that's, a lot of that has already occurred. And then we talk about multimodal transportation and bicycles and walking, and the need for bicycle parking downtown with maybe secured, covered bicycle parking, and increased public transit services to downtown, and those are all things that are included in the, in the URA Legacy Crossing District Plan, and so, you know, those coincide with the comp plan as well. Community design, further on in chapter two, we talk about just the physical character of a place, you know, when people first come to town, their first impression plays an important role in creating the sense of place and atmosphere. University of Idaho Campus, farmland, Pluse Hills, historic downtown, residential neighborhoods, and then it goes on to say accessibility, viability, and pedestrian friendliness of downtown are significant factors in the small-town feeling and contributes to downtown, and, you know, keeping up on those improvements and being able to insert more monies into that area and revitalize it would be, go a long way. Streetscapes, talking about just streetscapes in the public realm. Streetlights, trees, street furniture can contribute to the unique character of a block or neighborhood. Street trees and furniture, such as benches, are present throughout the downtown area. They're very important for creating pleasant, comfortable, and inviting atmosphere. Scale density design of buildings, so we talk about the city's buildings in downtown. Downtown area and the University of Idaho campus are two outstanding assets to the design of the community, with historic and architecturally interesting structures, public spaces, landscaping, and open spaces. And then we go through kind of the goals and implementation actions of chapter two. So it's preserving and enhancing special areas of the community, celebrate the community's identity, character, and heritage. So we're talking about, you know, downtown is, plays a major role in that. Enriching the community's social, cultural, physical, and economic environments through the arts, integrating aesthetic infrastructure standards, placement of public art in key locations. So promoting the redevelopment of Legacy Crossing Urban Renewal District. And so we have some crossover there, specifically pointing to the district to develop appropriate zoning regulations, which we've already done, design criteria, which was already done as well, including enhancements of the connection between the university and downtown. And then guide the expansion and intensification of downtown development while considering the needs for parking and desire to maintain the existing historic character. And then looking at streetscape plans to enhance the community, including the downtown and historic districts, and so that plays a part as well. Going on to chapter three, we talk about sidewalk and crosswalk facilities, pedestrian connectivity and mobility, high-valued in the community. We have a high commuter rate of bicycle commuters and walking commuters as well. So the installation of sidewalks where they do not currently exist, and the repair of sidewalks and disrepair have had to, have been identified as a priority in the city. So that would be elevated in downtown as well. And then, once again, we talk about the Legacy Crossing area between downtown and the U of I. And we move on to chapter six, so this is our economic development chapter of the plan, stating that downtown is a source of community pride and contributes to the city's exceptional quality of life. And so that quality of life is actually an economic driver for economic development. And so in economic development terms, downtown is a center of gravity for the target industries of financial, services, healthcare, real estate, and tourism. Objectives and implementation actions of that chapter six, so strengthen and enhance the vitality of downtown as the community's civic core, strengthen the physical linkage between downtown Moscow and the U of I, allow for development and redevelopment of mixed-use projects in and around downtown to bring added activity and vitality to the downtown area, and invest in public infrastructure. So sidewalks, street furnishing, signage within the downtown area to enhance the appearance and character of downtown. And so that really, you know, points to the, kind of the expansion of the downtown, or the Legacy Crossing District into the downtown area. And, you know, there's plenty of portions in the comp plan that discuss the need for reinvestment and infrastructure in the downtown core, and, you know, that's what the URA and the city are trying to do with the proposed annexation of the district. So staff has reviewed the Legacy Crossing Urban Renewal District redevelopment plan and has determined that the proposed plan's conformance with the comp plan, and staff recommends to the commission forward a recommendation to city council that the proposed plan is in conformance with the comp plan and direct staff to prepare the RCS document. And I'd certainly be able to try to answer any questions that you had.
So this may be an imaginary problem, but the only concern I thought of is that, I can kind of see how redevelopment of Main Street could suck a lot of money out of the, out of the URA, and possibly even to the point where it might impact the development in the rest of the URA. Do you think that's at all a possibility or a problem? But other than that, I mean, it's, I don't see any reason why it's not in conformance with the comp plan, so...
Yeah, and I mean, that would just be within the URA's... Yeah, and, and I mean, that would just be within the, the U R A's strategic plan. They, they have all the projects identified for infrastructure, water, sewer, you know, additions, streetscape, you know, those are all prioritized and that would, you know, there's, it has to be, you know, all these projects have to be approved by the urban renewal agency board. And so it's not the city necessarily making any of those decisions. They're a separate agency. And so it's not like the city could come in and say that, you know, you're going to dedicate so much amount of money to improvements on Main Street. So I don't think that that would happen. A lot of times, there's grant opportunities in order to be able to do that. It just helps if you have the U R As and you have the city in order to partner and it's a lot, you have a lot higher of a success rate when you do that. And so that's part of it, is, is having that and be able to do that cooperation, collaboration between the city and the U R A in order to get a lot more grant opportunities for public improvement projects like that. But I, you know, it, right now, they're not, it's not like, you know, they're flush with cash and, and they would be able to just dedicate a large portion of money. A lot of times with these projects, when redevelopment happens, they have developer participation agreements where the developers cover the costs of the public improvements and then the urban renewal agency pays them back over a certain period of time. And since the, the money, you know, isn't necessarily there to fund all of these projects upfront right now, because the district is relative, you know, it's 10 years of age, so it's relatively new, 24-year district, they have to do these participation agreements a lot of the time. They just can't fund them outright. And so I think that they generally pay close attention to what priorities they have and then, you know, pretty much dedicate the funds to those priorities and they have to go through and the board has to approve every, you know, expenditure they have for, for public, you know, infrastructure improvements, so.
Yeah, so rather than there being a big pot of money to pull from, it's more of an ability to kind of leverage grants and
Yeah, correct.
Other things, yeah.
Okay.
So Nels?
Michael, does, the fact that the Main Street, west side of Main Street is in a historic district, did you check to be sure that there isn't any federal, is there, was there any conflict there at all, or was it okay under guidelines of a historic district? Department of Interior, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, they're really two separate, two separate things. And so there, I can check on it, but I, I'm not, I don't think that that would be an issue.
Wendy, do you know that? Do you, have you run into that at all with a historic district?
Well, I think sometimes they're, they're paired together in terms of project initiatives, but, but that is why I asked the question, because the urban, usually you think of urban renewal slum clearance. I mean, I know it's emerged into a new era, but we lost a lot of historic buildings because of that. But in, in, you know, the thinking has obviously changed. But, you know, I don't know. I, I would think they're kind of, like Mike says, they're kind of two different agencies and hopefully they have common goals because they share the same physical space in some of these projects, so.
So it, the question before us is whether or not we feel that the amendment to the district is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I guess one of my questions is back to what Nels and Wendy were just talking about. Is there a possibility that there could be a conflict between the historic district? And is that relevant to what we have to decide tonight? And what I'm, I guess I'm leading to is if we were to approve this, would we approve it with a caveat that, that there is no conflict with the historic district to an urban renewal district? Or do you feel that at this point in time, I mean, I agree with Kurt, I didn't see anything in, in the comprehensive plan that would say that the amendment is in conflict with the comprehensive plan, but do we, do we get hung up if there's a conflict between, based on federal law, for example, that would override the creation of a, this is, like Kurt, this is my imaginary question.
In the way that national historic districts are basically, there is really no regulation with them. It's more of a honorary circumstance, except in the case where federal funds are involved. And then a review required, historic properties within the, that are listed on the register as part of the district are impacted in some way, and through use of federal funds, then there's a, a review required. But I don't, I think the two extremes are pretty separate. I guess I would make the comment, maybe a little bit contrary to Kurt's, that I think, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't fully understand how U R As, where the tax revenue comes from, but all those businesses and buildings along Main Street are paying taxes and they, you know, and they're, right, there's, the generation of money over, is going towards funding the U R A, right? And if, if nothing's going back into Main Street, then it's not exactly, I think this is a really good plan, I guess, because it does provide some improvement for the, for the tax businesses and buildings that are, owner, property owners that are paying taxes all along Main Street. They're getting something out of it rather than kind of development that's a little bit off their, you know, off their street. And so, but I'm probably going into the weeds because I don't completely understand, you know, that whole tax relationship. But anyway, that, I guess I see it as a good thing, is what I'm trying to say. For the Main Street, that we'll see some investment in, in Main Street infrastructure by extending and amending the district boundaries. And Mike explained to me why, you know, I didn't understand why the boundaries were drawn the way they were, but I didn't really understand the 10% tax now year. So, does that all make sense?
Yeah, it does. And one of the things on the tax increment financing, and this will be another reason why it's probably good to have some more detail, is that the, the taxes that are currently levied on any of those businesses within that district or any of those property owners wouldn't be coming into the U R A. It's only the increment of additional taxes based on the property improvement.
Yeah.
And another piece of that, another piece of that that is that the school district continues to get their share of that. So there's some nuances to all of this that, so is it, I guess in a way, you would almost think that the Main Street portion of this could benefit from the improvements in other parts of the district because that, there probably won't be an increase in taxes to those properties based on improvements until the improvements are made. So it, it's, I, there are no, no guarantees. I mean, I'm speculating, obviously, but, but I think understanding this tax increment piece of it's probably a pretty important. On the other hand, I don't see
You're right, and I, I feel like I need to
Well, if it's any consolation, I called Mike today too, so. But, but I guess down to the, the nuts and bolts here, what, what we need to decide tonight is whether or not we feel that the amendment to the district plan meets the, conforms to the comprehensive plan. And I, I, we're going to have to take a vote on it, but my opinion is that I don't see any conflict with that particular piece of it. So Joel?
Well, I'm, I'm very comfortable that it does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan. And I'm, I guess convinced by the argument that the urban renewal agency and the, and the historic district are, are separate things and that they probably provide a positive synergy. So I don't, I don't see any, well, maybe I'm naive, but I don't, I don't see any conflict there. I, I would be willing to support the endorsement of, of what we have before us.
So are we ready to go ahead and make a motion and take a vote? Commission, is that
You want that tonight?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I want to, I want to make a comment too. Yeah, the, the city is going to be focusing a lot on downtown infrastructure, you know, it's, it's coming up. It's, it's something that they're working on. And the purpose of the U R A is, is to partner with other entities like the city to try and, and that's what the, that's what the big need is and city's going to focus on that and how can we leverage resources and grants and so on and so forth to, to give that a bigger push. They're not, they're not taking part of the downtown in order to rob that money and put it somewhere else. They're doing this to work, to help work with the downtown. They're going to benefit from this. The infrastructure is for downtown. So I see no worries that I, I'm wondering if I'm hearing, because there's no worries there. And, and I've sat through a lot of meetings, it just isn't the audience, but a lot of meetings and a lot of financial stuff up there that I, I can't quote back to you, but, you know, I'm very comfortable with this.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward then. And as Mike has so eloquently stated up on the, on the screen there, that they're looking for us to recommend to city council that the proposed plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and direct staff to prepare the relevant documents. So, and I think we have a 30-day window, if I'm not mistaken, to, based on this one piece of correspondence that we had. So we've got 30 days to get that letter done and to city council, correct? So, okay, so I would entertain a motion.
There you go, Victoria.
I would still move.
Okay, Kurt, second? Okay, so we have a motion by Victoria, second by Kurt, to forward the recommendation to city council. All, all, all approved, I can't talk today, all in favor.
Hi.
Okay, good. So we got that sorted. And Mike, you'll work on, we don't need to bring that back for Wendy's signature, do we? That is when the documents are
We'll just bring it back at next meeting, just like we do with the rezon, you know, any other land use action that has a relevant criteria and standards document. So I'll work to draft that and then you'll have it in your packet at next meeting and you can review it and
Super.
If you wanted to
Well, that was a question I have because I, the last piece that Anne emailed out, I guess yesterday to all was, was directly addressed to me. So do I, what do I need to do to follow up on that?
It would just be your signature on the relevant criteria and standards document. And if you're, if you're not here, then Rob, as the vice chair, would be able to sign that as well. And if he's not there, I think Joel's still our second, second vice chair.
I'm probably out.
Oh, he's going too.
No, no, you're still there. Well, no, but I'm, out of town.
Well, we'll find somebody to sign it.
Yeah, yeah, no. Well, I appreciate, Mike, I appreciate your explanation because there were some areas I just never completely understood and I think I've really helped. And in my, in my case, anyway, to clarify, and I don't know how the rest of you feel, I might have had similar conclusions about things, but.
Well, I'm sure I wasn't as eloquent as Bill is, but we can maybe have him come at a future meeting to talk about his, he's the executive director, so he could certainly give a bit of, more of a background, an explanation about how the tax increment financing works in the district and, and we could put that on a future agenda.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that was, you know, for that being, in terms of what the amended, the intent of the amendment is, thank you, I'll be real quick.
Okay, and the U R A, the U R A website, you know, they post their documents there and they have annual reports. And that gives you some nice graphs and descriptions of what the U R A does and what it's about. So you can go, and you can, you can, from the city site, you can click on the U R, U R A icon and it'll take you there. And then you can check that.
Victoria, we're going to have to have a conversation later because I have not been able to hear anything you said. For some reason, it's not from you, so.
We'll have her give you a briefing.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the last item, review of the draft ordinance, amending the planned unit development base density, rural plot access requirements, expiration of certain land use actions, and public notice requirements. Mike, are you going to do a quick overview on that or do we
I'm not. I, I, this is pretty much the document you saw last time, and I've got Victoria's change circled, but I just put it back in the packet. So I'll have the, the whereas statements finalized by next meeting, but we have it scheduled for public hearing, so
Okay.
At, at our next meeting. So it was just opportunity, if you had any more comments or questions, we could talk, we could talk about it.
So you don't need any action from us tonight then?
No.
So, okay, so
I didn't see anything that surprised me, so.
Okay, everything, Victoria, you had a couple of comments. So one last item here, I'm going to come back to, before everybody starts running. Wendy, do you want to talk about this? Do you want me to take the lead? How would you like to approach?
Well, it's probably easier for everybody, either you than me.
Okay.
But, you know, yeah, just what we talked about and what our, what our process will be with the grant.
Great, okay. So Wendy and Mike and I have been having some questions about the relevancy of shared readings, and we kind of thought that it would be appropriate to take a little different approach to what we've been doing. And we started thinking about this more in terms of a continuing, continuing education exercise rather than just kind of ad hoc shared readings. But in order for us to, to make that a relevant process, we would like to, and this is, I want everybody to put their thinking caps on, you got a month to, a month and some to think about this. We would like to take about 45 minutes to an hour or so at the end of the August 22nd meeting to have a goal-setting session. We won't, we, we, we don't want to get down in the weeds. We don't want this to come out with 30 or 40 goals. We want to keep it really limited, but we'd like to then use that as an exercise to direct what we're going to do with respect to continuing education and, and it could be, Wendy mentioned it earlier, it could be as simple as having somebody come in and explain U R A and tax increment financing to us. But it, we think that it'll help direct our efforts rather than just doing it on kind of an ad hoc basis. So anyway, what, what I
I guess I would ask for that, that we are thinking in terms of restructuring it from shared reading to continuing education, is that we're going to look at a number of media forms, like, for example, this conference that we're invited to go to would be a form of this continuing education plan, but we, you know, or perhaps there's a YouTube video that everybody watch or, you know, a documentary or something. I mean, you know, there's many different ways. It gives us more flexibility instead of just trying to find articles. And, and it would be really, we decided that it would just be really helpful to have some targeted goals that we pair up those learning opportunities with that, that sort of reach the interest of the, of the commission. And also pair with whatever Mike says we have coming down the pipe in terms of planning responsibilities. So that's, that's pressing, keen to look at.
And I think one of the things that we've talked about is that we don't want to, we don't want to turn this into an irrelevant exercise. I mean, it needs to be fairly targeted. And as Wendy said, Mike can certainly help direct us with issues that are coming up that might require some additional study on our part. So I, I think it's an opportunity for, there's so many new, one of the members of us that are, that are new, that I think we could get a lot out of, of doing that. So, you know, I, this isn't a day-long goal-setting session. We're, we're just talking about carving out a little bit of the end of that meeting on the 22nd. So, and we wanted to let you know that that's when we were going to do it, so you could bring your ideas to, to that part of the meeting.
Say date again.
August 22nd.
And we are not meeting the first, the second week of August, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Is that still the date?
Correct.
Right, yeah, that meeting is canceled.
Right, so, so that would be, yes.
Okay, great. Wendy, I'm glad you could join us today. Does anybody
Yeah, thank you for putting up with the longest
Yeah, it worked, worked out well, except for you couldn't
It was a good meeting to be able to participate because I would help you understand the U R As.
No, that's great.
Yeah, well, have a good week.
And you, you as well, and see you in a few weeks. And anything else for the good of the order. Otherwise, meeting adjourned. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.